So we want to continue the housing turnover, keep young people. So I mean, it's like a story. If you ask one on the CDA, why are we supporting TIP for this? Or why do we have duplex conversion? You know, there was a story, a logic about why we were doing what we're doing. And I think, you know, that logic has been somewhat questioned. And I think that's kind of interesting. I think that's what I was thinking about what we're doing. We're trying to come to some kind of agreement about the story of what we're trying to accomplish. And then the tools we're using to try to factor.
So are we doing that tonight? May I am missing the process here?
And I'm very trusting that now, 100%. I think that's what the board would like to come out of that. From my perception, and I'm only one of seven. But what I'm trying to communicate, and I've been trying to communicate is that I'm John Kraus, the understanding as a developer. The perception is one thing. We can focus with all the time, and we get input from people. And that's great, because that's so important, to get input from the public. But what we've been doing on our other initiatives in the village, since I've taken office as president, is figuring out what is actually real through data, educating, and then deciding what our priorities are. Because we're never going to come to consensus. I am fine with subsidizing development during a housing bubble. Like when the housing market drops. But always go in that initiative. Is it going to moment down? I mean, without those, if our vacancy rate rises, I don't know how to sit here today, because I could vote either way. And so to prioritize what types of initiatives or policies or conversation or dialogue, as Trustee Anthe said, we want to share with communities. I can't do that today, because I don't have the research study. I don't know that. I'm so thankful for our housing market study, because it actually gave us some data we could share and then prioritize.
So it sounds like, um, this is John again.
Thank you.
And, yeah, we should be doing that, sorry.
Yeah.
I, I, that makes a lot of sense to me. My comment, it sounds like this is basically going to be a discussion tonight. Um, because, so we don't have a list of...
Yeah, there's no conclusions.
Yeah, we don't, we don't even have a list of, say, 10 narratives. We're trying to narrow down to three. We have to come up with a list of narratives. My feeling is, there are no really strong narratives that we're trying to figure out right now, which is probably a good thing. I mean, there's no, at least in my mind, there's, there, but, there's probably 20 different opinions. On, some people think composting is the most important thing we need to be doing right now versus housing affordability. So what I see in this document is what we've been talking about for six months, is that everyone thinks everything is a priority. And, and everyone sees every side of every issue as the priority. So now how the heck do we narrow that down?
I've been, I've been doing this for a long time, with a lot of communities all over the country. And the idea was to go through, give you a sense of some of the issues, so you're not just talking without, yeah, without knowing.
It's good that, it's demonstrate that we do know the issues. There's nothing in this system.
Once you hear some update from, so that everybody's working with the same knowledge base, an update on some of the economic development tools available, have some dialogue about, maybe there, maybe there isn't any consensus, and maybe you just want to keep the status quo, okay?
Maybe there's not need, there may.
President Rozek, this is Ann. I would like to continue with the, um, the process that's laid out before us, because we may get to something.
Yeah.
But, but you may come out with two or three priorities that there is broad consensus on, that all of a sudden we can refine and make it a priority. You, the board, and the CDA can make it a priority to, for the staff and others to do research and get you more information on those issues.
Right.
And, uh, so that you can make decisions.
Yeah, thank you. I think we need to go to the next, um, component. Please.
This is Trustee Mar. I, I, I agree with Trustee Amenta that, uh, in the past, there was a vision of what we were trying to address. Well, you know, increase the tax base, shift the tax burden off the residents, fill in the vacant parking lots, uh, improve our businesses, district and stuff. And there was very specific plan laid out. A lot of it's been accomplished, now what do we do next? I think, I think there is some common, common things we can agree to. Because let's, specifically when you're going over number eight, the answer is number eight. Um, keeping, uh, improving our housing stock. Uh, what, what millennials are looking for in housing. I did a New York Times report just the other day. They're looking for new communities just like ours, walkable, small housing, neighborly. But they're looking for housing that's in good shape, that's updated. So promoting that, so we can draw people. Uh, we do have a large, I, we are the, have affordable housing, I'm not sure. You look at how many housing units, like in River Park, I think there's 500 housing units that's developed, and a lot of capital is low, lower price, real estate. So, but I, I'm not sure, quality affordable is one thing, but, uh, I'm not sure.
Well, do you agree to housing retorters? Because it says that we have the right, but the, but the people that are filling those aren't the low-income people. So, you know, regulations, the policy initiative would change then, because you would need to regulate that. So you'd have to have like a formal housing subsidized, that you would make sure low-income people are lower income people, be allowed to.
Right.
You know, so, so that, we need that, but then, we said we probably don't, we're going to knock.
But, but, but.
Okay.
Quality needs to be.
Yeah, so let's, let's get back to the agenda of the evening. So I, you know, I think that's good conversation. Um, again, this is, this is a challenging project. I think we're trying to start from very broad and slowly narrow down. So this beginning part, I think, is the hardest, because we don't get a, get a grasp of it.
I just realized that the people on the phone don't have the PowerPoint, so they don't know what's coming. So, um, if we could just bear with us, we've got some good things.
Um, thank you, Michaela, with Baker-Tillian. So, as I said, the, the purpose of what I'm, um, providing you is, is really it's from a broader perspective of why communities choose, um, to participate in housing and development. And it's, it's intended to, again, stimulate conversation, and everyone's going to have different ideas as far as where they want to, what, what's important to them. But the goal of this is to try to match what our general policy objectives for communities and how they might fit into, um, some of the issues and, and priorities and goals that have been identified through the survey. Um, so some of the policy, um, purposes to consider, um, and, and some of these were listed within, um, the survey results. Enhance the economic diversity of the community. Create a variety of, of housing options, um, whether that's, um, uh, market rate, low income, luxury, um, affordable. And, you know, I want to stop on, on affordable housing for just a moment, because I know there's, again, everyone's got different perspectives on what affordable housing means. Um, some people think it means low income. Some people think it means Section 8. Um, really what it means is it's, it's, and I know your, your housing study, you know, bring to the different levels of what affordability means and, and how it works. But, you know, it's essentially making sure that people are only paying, um, as much as they can afford for their, um, for their, for their housing, um, costs, and whether that's owner occupied or rental. Um, you know, the target is 30% of your income is spent on housing. Uh, by doing that, you free up additional revenues to be able to invest back in your community. Um, so it doesn't necessarily have to be just, um, high-income folks that are investing in your community. If everyone is, is able to pay what they can afford, meaning within the target range, um, that frees up disposable income, hopefully for other, um, needs or, and purposes. Um, so, and so when we say variety of housing options, and it really is from, um, trying to meet different affordability targets and different, um, income limits and, um, so on. And I know senior housing was another priority, where if you're on fixed incomes, how do you still make it affordable for them? Keep them in your community. Um, and, and typically, depending on as, as, um, folks age and their disposable income needs lessen, typically they perhaps can afford more in income, more in housing costs, um, as opposed to when you're younger, you have more other, uh, other disposable cost needs.
Michaela, can I just ask, are you, because it would seem like creating a variety of housing options is a decision that a community needs to make as to whether they want to... So are you saying that, that communities, typically that is a, a good decision to make? That a community is, um, better served by having a variety of housing options? Or are you saying that it is something we need to come from?
Something, well, I think. That's a, I mean, that's a good question. So the, the, the reason why I'm bringing this up is, is at the end of the day, you know, part of this, i- if, if the goal is to get to, um, some type of framework on, um, policy interaction for staff and for the decision-makers to be able to, um, proceed as far as what the, the, the goals and the mission of your community are, um, you'll focus more energy on different, whatever you come to consensus on, if, with your, your goals and your strategic, um, priorities, you'll be able to apply more of your resources towards those. Um, and so if, if, if a variety of housing options, when they, when they, typically, you want to have, if someone wants to, is, is more than raised in your community, they want to, they want to live there, they want to age there, um, they don't want to have to move out. For example, if they're seniors, oftentimes they have to move out if there's not a place for them to stay in your community. Perhaps they don't want to move out, but there's just not a place for them to be. So it's trying to create that lifecycle housing, understanding, and this is, this is in a, in a broad perspective. I'm, um, um, bringing that, or representing that. But I think, and the, the purpose of trying to keep the lifecycle housing is, I'm going to pick on seniors again, but to the extent that they're in single-family homes right now, or perhaps the upkeep they can't handle, it's, it's more of an entry-level home that they're in, however, they can't find a place to go or they can't afford it. The goal is to try to have that variety of housing, so that if they want to leave their single-family home, a young family can move in. And again, it just, it's that continuum. So, um, again.
Thank you.
Of course, we'll get into, you know, market can dictate that, and that's where the, the public's role can, can be involved. But, um, again, if, if that's where you have to decide if that's one of your priorities.
Can I ask you just, sorry, another, could you help with the definition of economic diversity? The first one, what do you mean by economic diversity?
So that's if, um, so that can be a broad perspective from if it's a variety of, um, if it's a variety of, of housing, if it's a variety of businesses. You know, some of the discussion in here was, if, if, more entrepreneurship, um, if it's more the, like, the, the business incubators, affordable, um, you know, affordable commercials. So it's trying to have a broad base of community in your community. Um, again, to try to attract a broader, um, diversity of diverse, um, community.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Uh, job retention and growth. And again, this is, um, maintaining that, you know, I know from the housing study, there's a lot of jobs, there's a lot of people that, there's not a lot that work and live in Shorewood. So part of this is, do you want to try to change that? Can you, want and can are different things as well. And we, we obviously were, you know, trying to deal with that. But again, if you want it, perhaps you send more of your resources towards trying to achieve that. Um, you might not be successful, but you have a better chance if you're cohesive in it. But again, that's the purpose of that, is to try to maintain jobs within your community if you're trying to grow and keep people in your, um, community. That goes along with having high-quality jobs. And that, um, high-quality jobs doesn't necessarily mean high pay, which is great, but it's high quality for, um, diverse, um, levels of people. All of that leads to stabilizing your community. Um, if you don't have a lot of turnover, um, folks are in it. You get that sense of base in community that a lot of you and a lot of the, um, survey participants have indicated. And of course, if you can increase your tax base, that should be a savings and a burden, um, a burden reducer for all of your, um, community. So, um, this is not an exhaustive list of incentives, but, um, I know that's one of the hot topics. But, you know, incentives that, um, typically are at the forefront for public assistance could be, um, tax increment financing. Um, I will, there's, there's different ways that tax increment can be used, and I think that's another layer of, um, policy discussion. Some communities will only do it on a reimbursement-based basis, which means that the private community has to incur all the costs and will be reimbursed for whatever those extraordinary costs are. We'll go into them a little bit more. Or upfront, where a community will actually finance the improvements upfront to take the future tax increment revenues to reimburse itself through debt payments or internal financing. Again, these are policy decisions on, on how you want to use the tools and for what types of projects. Um, other types of assistance that can be, um, used are, would be loans, whether they're, um, low interest, deferred loans, um, different things like that, as well as grants. And, and the purpose of bringing this up is as you work on, um, uh, defining your priorities, um, if, if part of the goals are expanding your toolkit, how can you look at what the tools that you have are available? Um, how are you using them? Could you be using them differently and try to maximize your return on, on how the tools are being used? So again, why do you...
Do you have, um, how we, how we voted, or how we definitely voted as one of your tools?
It, it certainly, I would say, um, as part of, so at this point, um, as part of the discussion, what we would hope to as part of the action steps is what, um, if, if the village chooses to, um, expand their toolkit and use the tools within their kit, um, what types of tools do they want to use? How do you want to use them? Um, and so I, there's, you know, there's different programs that can be, um, established and utilized based on what the objectives, um, are.
Yeah.
It's just, I wanted to share with the CDA that we talked internally, I think, we're likely, you know, the group that's on it, it's not very exciting. And one of the things I asked was, for that, the housing, the housing study recommends potentially doing census votes, and he said, based on structure, um, which I forgot, but they actified with its story, it goes to concrete, um, the structure, like the state building regulations. And so unless you're going to go up, you know, unless you're going to try to bring in sort of like 100 or more, that really wouldn't be effective. And I thought that was very useful information.
Yeah, I think just to get, I mean, I, I know we're all trying to get, wrap our heads around this. I, I feel like we're inter, we're going back and forth between two discussions. I feel like tonight's discussion is what you were saying, Michaela, more about strategic planning with respect to sort of higher level. Where, where do we have agreement in the tactics of how we accomplish that is, once we agree on those two to three things, if it is housing, or if it is senior, even specifically, you know, then what are the tactics that we do once we agree on that? But for, for tonight, it's talking about, you know, strategically, where should we start focusing and, and narrowing? That's the goal for tonight. So I think the policy slide was a great slide, because I think that actually might help drive some of the key, you know, broad themes that we're going to, the CDA and the board can agree on to move forward.
So I just wanted to list here, again, it's for more informational and, and discussion purposes of why communities use incentives. Um, and again, it's, it's, it's a broad-based perspective. But, um, incentives are used to stimulate development, where otherwise would not occur, which is referred to as the Bud 4 test. Um, I know there's, there's diverse opinions on the Bud 4 test and, and, um, how it, how it can be met. But ultimately, you're using the incentive to try to stimulate development if you're not seeing it now or in a specific area. Um, and that's part of the, the focus. Retaining the existing tax base, um, trying to encourage development of uses that otherwise would not occur, such as if low-income housing is not financially feasible. Um, using incentives to try to make it financially feasible, if that's a policy objective. That's why you might use an incentive. Uh, along with, um, retaining your existing tax base, can you enhance and grow it, diversify it, um, create more, um, commercial and other opportunities? Um, you might need it to facilitate infrastructure improvements, whether it's redevelopment, um, or more of a cohesive approach to development based on what the location is. Then again, if you're trying to further facilitate new developments within existing plans. So if you have a large master-planned area, you might use incentives to try to facilitate additional development, because that's your primary objective for that specific area or type of development.
Can I, sorry, can I ask now a tax, maybe a slightly tactical question on the... So as you can tell from the survey, there's a broad spectrum of views on this specific incentive tool. Um, and I think at some point, whatever we come up with on our, on our goals and objectives, it, we need to come to some agreement on the use of this. And so that to me is, it's, it's a fairly high priority, I think. Um, because without that, I think the community, I think everybody's confused. We've got different opinions on it. It's the worst thing that's ever happened to, it's the greatest thing that's ever happened. And obviously, the truth is somewhere in the middle there in how you use it and what you do. So I would appreciate, you know, not for tonight, but, I don't know, insights on how other communities have, have, have come to that agreement or creative, how can you have creative uses of TIP. We've talked about having a, a TIP plan. Trustee Amenta has talked extensively about that to, you know, to help provide. I think that is a good idea. Again, that's probably more of a tactic. But if we decide that economic development and TIP is an important part, clearly we need a plan supporting that. But again, as part of this work and maybe at the April meeting, helping us find that path, I think would be really helpful, to have that conversation.
And related to that, and maybe this was kind of what you were saying, I think regarding TIP, TIP, one of the perceptions out there, I think, is that everything would happen without it anyway. And that, I've never seen any data, studies on.
Exactly.
Discussion about, um, so it is, uh, that would be useful too. I don't want to get into, let's not get into discussion on that right now, but I just wanted to throw that out there, okay?
Well, I think it's the elephant in the room.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
Again, I'm right in the middle as a policymaker. I can give out 20, 90 million times in a, in a prior city. But the question has always been for me, um, is, is needed? And I don't, you know, that's, I guess we're going to stumble as we go through this process, because we can't just define the idea of economic development based on perception. I mean, we can, we have the past. I, I, because there's policies they made, and we're in a recession. I think that those policies were good through time, those incentives were good. But at this time, are they still needed?
I have a question. Uh, this is Ann. When you see things like, um, you know, in low-income housing or, you know, economic diversity, and then you also see, don't use TIP? It seems like, is, you know, it seems like that, maybe that's our community's way of saying, TIP, it should only be used if it's to create economic diversity or, you know, low-income housing. But it seems like, is that, do, how do communities resolve that type of thing?
A lot of, a lot of cities do establish a set of criteria or benchmarks that if an investment, um, as part of a TIP project, even be considered, it's got to meet certain criteria that, that the community, the leadership in the community has established, as their, their, part of it is going to, you know, they're going to provide open space and additional, you know, pocket parks or park space, developed parks or areas or affordable development. And if they meet a, a range of criteria, there's, there's a whole range that can be established, then that kind of, kind of kicks in the opportunity to be considered as a TIP project.
So kind of a...
But they need the policies based on market.
Hello, President Rozek?
Milwaukee artists came over time. So he said, no affordable housing or luxury would be, would be, uh, you know, centralized. And then the problem was the housing market crashed for five years. We couldn't do that thing. So I just, I just want to throw that out there. I just don't know what the market, the exact market condition is right now.
So I think one of the objectives that we want to conclude here after the, after strategic planning is to develop some priorities. And then after those are developed, then reflect on how we want to see that implemented in a TIP policy. But you need to have your priorities first, because if not, you will never develop a policy that's reflective of what your goals are. So someone asked earlier in the session, what is the purpose of these two meetings? And it is the fact that for the last two years, we have not been able to come to consensus or a level of agreement on priorities. That is a problem. If there's lack of agreement, we will not make progress. Communities like ours should be making progress in this area. Should be agreeing to not come to agreement, then we agree to stay stable.
So why do you say, I mean, you have to, no one has come with a, a TIP proposal. There has not been any discussion. I don't know where.
Everybody's still talking about it happened five years ago.
Right, right. We, we haven't, I'm not, I mean, I'm not even sure we're in disagreement, because it's never been asked of us.
Without them?
Because it hasn't been asked of us since I've been elected in 2015. Actually, there was an amendment to the development agreement that I voted against. But I mean, um, it really hasn't come up, so...
It, it, it's come up in, in sort of those initial conversations that, that happened. And we, I would say, President Rozek.
What's that?
We, we have been, um, what's the right word? Circumstanc, you know, it's certainly a tool, but we've used that tool aggressively to address what the community thought was an issue 10, 15 years ago. And, and the issue has been resolved. So now we are definitely looking at it as more tactically and not, I would say, as universally as we did.
I don't think that's a percentage. It needs to be based on that.
If I could, it's a good thing to establish them.
Yep.
That would be a criteria. You know, if I could add, it's not here, but I, this is not uncommon that it's cyclical, that you, you'll have, whether it's a recession, whether it's, um, decision-makers' direction. But cities will decide, they'll say, I'm, I'm, I'm off, I'm off the mark. We're not doing anything, we're not open for business, we're not providing any incentives. If you want to come, you can pull a permit, that's fine. Then they assess the progress in five to 10 years and say, did, did we like what happened the last five or 10 years? Are there things we should be doing differently? So that's where you reevaluate your policies and decide, well, maybe, you know. So again, if leadership changes, markets change, demographics change, the whole variety of things that could cause you to change. But, um, I mean, we typically recommend that you periodically review your, your policies and plans and guidelines and, and to understand, are you happy with the progress that was made? And how do you want to facilitate the future? And you're right, you do make that decision of, if we choose to do nothing and let the market happen, what does that mean? You know, that's, that's choices that you make.
That is a decision.
Yes, right. And...
But I think, do we have the markets? I mean, policymakers made that decision all of, all of the year of recession. I do think that, they don't just sit here and say, oh, well, perfectionism is this, and we're going to, we want to address it.
Could we, I think we've noted that. President Roz, have you noted that? Um, I'm asking our facilitators. They've noted that.
Okay.
Yeah, one thing, this Trustee Mar, I mean, our economic conditions could be shifting. I mean, in 2000, when we were in 2008, the housing market just stopped. We kept going with our, using subsidies. Now that's changed, but who knows what we're going to get in the next year or two? Um, one thing also, subsidies then gives you, it's some more control over the, what nature of projects you're going to get. They just come in with zoning, you know, meeting zoning. You, you, you may not get the kind of development you want in your community and, and the conditions they have. So, uh, we're, it is a tough time to be figuring out, because who knows what's going to, the coming years, couple of years, it's going to be like, uh, that. Uh, but I think there are some specific projects, like North Shore Base project, that we should have some consensus on, and because what, what would we like to see in these spots? I don't know.
What do we need?
Yeah, I mean, no.
What are, what are we lacking? And so I, you know, I mean, I don't have a current assumption. What's the market saying?
Well, the market says, the, the market tells us when a developer comes in and says, I'm willing to do something. That's the market. I mean, that's how we know, that's how we know what the market is.
It's a case in that light. And they want money to, to run the base to make more money.
Well, then, well, I mean, that, I think what Mike said is actually it. What, what do we want to see in terms of new development? We have an empty site where the cleaner used to be in that house that's sitting there empty on Oakland. We have the North Shore Bank site, I don't know, am I missing some other? We have the parking lot that behind the big building at Capitol in Oakland. I mean, we have a couple of developed those sites. And that's kind of the question that I think we're supposed to be here. Like, what do we as policymakers want? What do we, what kind of development do we want to see? Um, that's what we're trying to figure out, right?
Do we need data on population? Because if we do, then we need some office development by another, because we don't have to do that.
Okay, you've made that point like 15 times, okay? You've got that point. And so there's no, you're not moving things along by continuing to say the same thing.
You know, my experience, I was manager of a city that was, at the time, the fastest-growing city in the Midwest. And we were getting about 3,000 single-family building permits issued a year. Lots and lots of commercial development. And what we decided was, the elective officials, the governing body, and what we were told by the development community is that they much prefer if rules are established, that they know what, how to abide by them and know what the game is when they approach a community. If there are no criteria or established rules, it's very difficult for them to waste time spending one, two, three months of their valuable time trying to negotiate or convince a governing body or a planning commission or whomever they're dealing with about the merits of the project and what, you know, what they're actually, that the community actually wants. And so the more that you can prescribe what you think's important as a community and identify the types of development, the density of development, the types of uses, and what you're willing to do if they give you what you want, you'll have a lot more interest if the rules of the game are known. And as opposed to having to come in and negotiate something in the midair. So, you know, that's my experience. And so the whole part of that idea is, maybe there are some priorities that you want to know. You have a feel for what would be ideal from a community standpoint to go into those lots and those development areas or patterns. And so that's the whole idea of trying to discuss, pre-discuss those issues and come up with some rules that will provide some guidance to the development community. Is that? I don't know anything about anything in here. It's my sister.
Oh, it's released that one. That would be.
It's like a soundtrack episode.
Yeah, you should be able to just.
Okay, I can't hear you anymore.
Yeah.
The ears now?
It's always reversed.
You might just have to hold this. I'm not sure.
Is somebody, or can we unplug it?
It's turned on, it's just going off. They won't play it.
Yeah, I'm putting, if you want, hold this.
I have a purpose at this meeting.
So I was going to say, it sounds like one of the, so another way, another word maybe for priorities is kind of values, like sort of what are the values that we want? So then it doesn't, it's not as concrete and specific. So you could get into data after that to drill down. So it sounds like about, that we would want to try to explore is, we want some type of sense of community benefit agreement. And that would be sort of list of criteria that the, that under, that a development should offer X, Y, and Z to our community. So it sounds like achieving that type of, articulating what that set of criteria is would be something that.
Some communities take that approach and are being successful doing that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a question beforehand of whether we want to be active in what you described, saying we want this type of development, whatever that is, and we're willing to do these incentives to get that particular thing. I mean, to me, that's even a question of whether we even want to do that or whether. Because, you know, I mean, retail bricks and mortar retail is a very, very tough business right now. We've had a long, many years of experience with empty storefronts that are finally now being filled. So I'm just, you know, hesitant. And to me, it's like, yeah, a developer will come and build ground floor retail if we pay them to do it, then they sell the building and are out. You know, they've made their money and they're gone. And the tenant can't make it there because there's not enough business. And then we have another empty storefront. So I mean, I'm kind of like, if there's a market with no incentive, if they feel, if they can get a tenant who's going to pay the rent that pays their development cost and their mortgage on it, then there's a market there. And that tenant knows that they're going to have enough business to be able to pay their rent. You know, us getting in and subsidizing it, especially some kind of the type of development that's on very thin ice right now. I'm not sure it's a build it and they will come kind of situation, okay? Because we have built it and they have.
Sometimes it's not a subsidy. Sometimes it's, you allow them to have mixed use in the same building, you know, residential in the upper floors and.
We can allow them to do that.
I know, but that's just an example.
What they would want is to go over the block before zoning. They would want to go up high. And that's another.
Yeah, it's just, my point is, it's just not always a subsidy. It could be other kinds of.
But that's, I mean, that's giving them something to. So I mean, to me, it's a question of, do we even want to be in a position of saying, yeah, come on, we'll negotiate, we'll give you something in order for you to build something that we want? I mean, to me, it's like, what is there a market for? If there's a market for it, you're not going to need us to. You're not going to need us to give you anything because there's enough market to support it. And, you know, I mean, so I'm just not even sure that, given our past experience and our retail vacancies, because with retail development, whether there's, I wouldn't even want to subsidize something that I'm not sure there isn't a market for.
Yeah.
So we might not know there's a market for it because the developer says, I can make money building this.
So a way of flipping that is saying, so really, our priority is to only have development that is market-driven. And that's a priority. And so can, is that something, I'm just giving it's like, what are you ready to talk about tonight? And I'll talk about it, and then we can.
Kind of jerk, you know?
Can I give one example on kind of, so a community who worked and it was fully built out, so now they're in redevelopment mode, so land is a commodity. So they were struggling, there was a tax increment financing request. And where they were struggling was, the market would bring a big box. So a target with surface parking, right? It would be a value of $5 million. They, that would just happen, right? They could pull a permit tomorrow, they would build that, no incentive.
Right.
However, once they built that single-story surface parking, they took away whatever the size of that lot was. So instead, they redirected their efforts and said, how can we maximize? And it's a policy decision. How do we maximize the density of that site? And instead of a $5 million investment with surface parking, we're going to have a couple of mixed-use facility buildings, subject, again, it's, you know, it's market demand, but mixed-use facility, structured parking. And instead of $5 million with no subsidy, we're going to get, say, $20 million. But we have to give them some type of subsidy to help create that density. Maybe they're flowing from housing. You just decide, whatever your objectives are. And that's what, so the decision in that case is a little bit greater because the market would have dictated, would have built this certain type of development, but it wasn't perhaps the maximum size for that site. And so that's where, that's where the complexity is. And that's why this conversation's not easy. Because the market could fill it with something. Maybe it's a two-story building, but maybe you really want four stories. But that requires a zoning change or regulation change, or you have to talk to the neighborhood because you have line of sight, you know. So all of those are very important issues that you have to try to decide.
So my question is, I'm thinking like a colleague, we have a great bid director. I'm very excited to be involved for hiring such a well-experienced bid director. And I think that her input would be very valuable, and she would understand us. But if we have, we have a lot of coffee shops, we have a lot of, I've been in some meetings where, you know, you don't could come in and say, well, we can build this just like what the zoning coach says. And I'd say, well, that's a market. Is there a market for more commercial? Because we might not be able to fill it. And then if not, then our policy might not be to subsidize a four-story building and require a commercial on the first floor. And there is not so far as to actually, the market would be saying, yes, excuse because residential and parking components with it. And then that's the regulation part of it. But my question is, you know, I understand the incentive part very well. My question is, by making, you know, some priorities and using those incentives, it's important to know, like Chelsea mentioned, can we fill it? I mean, I'm a small business, and I can tell you all my reasons. I'm not a business after eight years because I can't fill red anymore. So the market is changing. If we just build and save my four stories, I don't know if we can find enough four coffee shops that our local economy will support. You know, what is our local buying power? Because that is the key to understanding how many, how much, you know, how much retail or how much space, which space you want to do. So I'm also always suspicious. And I, and at this point, because we don't have any data, I trust Amenta. Let the market decide. I mean, there's no, if we were in a recession and the government was telling me that, my opinion would change.
Yeah, I mean, I think our first topic of discussion is, are we, in what types of situations would we consider incentives at all? I mean, for me, you know, I mean, I'm willing to consider talking about it for affordable housing. But I don't know that much about affordable housing. But every article I read about it in Wisconsin, they get part of that state low-income housing tax credit honey. And I did read about one recently, it was in a paper just like a couple of days ago, where there was also some TIP. But generally, for the low-income housing, you know, they don't need TIP. They get the tax credits from the state. And that's enough for them to be able to do a project. So, I mean.
The biggest challenge there is going to be opposition by the neighborhood to building a large, for sale, for seeing both. And variants on height and density. I mean, those are going to be your major issues there. I agree with you. I think there's plenty of ways for people to finance affordable housing. I would guess we're not getting our doors beat down for that because they know that would be a very long fight to get a 10-story affordable housing tower built in the middle of Shore.
Well, like, not the housing study said, I mean, we actually have pretty good supply of affordable housing. So maybe, you know, maybe that's, I mean, that's kind of what I think we have to sort of decide of what, you know, what would we like to see and what, anything we would be willing to subsidize. I mean, I'm personally not willing to subsidize luxury housing anymore.
Would you subsidize, this is Dusty Moreno. Would you subsidize affordable housing, Section 8 housing, if it was incorporated with luxury condos? If you had a tower?
No, now that there's a market, that's the market can support it with the rent. It all depends on the economics of the project.
But if it was known?
I'm not going to prospectively, proactively recruiting luxury apartments with knowing we're going to subsidize it first. But if they came to us and said, we want to build townhomes, and here's the reformer, and it's not feasible, maybe, but I'm going to get our housing that says, no, there's a market, I can support that with the rent or the, or the, they're right. Look what's happening on movement.
So it sounds like that's a basic criteria.
$100 housing, how old, they're finally building them, but we're not finding a feeling of it.
I mean, I guess it's.
Well, they'll only be built if they pre-sell. So they're testing the market on everybody's behalf there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's got great data.
I don't know, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, I guess, I guess I'm not, I'm not, I have to read the housing study more carefully, but I'm not convinced that we have a lack of affordable housing, I guess.
I think we just have a lack of housing. If we don't have affordable housing, our affordable housing is rented by people that, you know, need it.
Because they're not.
Because it's not a housing in general.
Effect for, there's people feeling the tired.
So if I.
Credit that.
Sorry, no, if I could add, I think the housing, you know, the housing study. So I think the question was earlier, the variety of housing options. And I think you're right that, you know, the housing options and the occupants are sort of like sources and uses of funds. Right now, they perhaps aren't lining up the best and most efficiently they can. If you've got folks that are in, that are using up the more affordable housing stock, but they could be somewhere else, but there's nowhere else for them to go, it's again, that cycle of how do we better fit? You know, the housing study said you are going to need housing units by 2024, I believe it was, you know, in range. But I think the goal of it is, how do we make these units affordable? At what levels people can afford to pay at different income levels? And by freeing up more of the naturally occurring, so the housing, having naturally affordable, the NOA is easier to make, is more cost-effective than constructing new affordable housing units with the tax credits because of all the additional requirements and so on. So I think that, so, but that's the batching of the occupants and what's available for them to live in.
Absolutely. And it makes sense, too, they recommended doing two blocks, if it's a three blocks, you need more supply, it's not going to solve a problem. But that, again, is based on, like, the market. And that makes sense to me. I love that study.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I feel like there's still the question, you know, we keep talking about affordable housing. But that, there's a question before that, which gets, again, your policy question of, do we want a diverse community? Do we want an economic, you know, is that a goal of Shore? I don't know that I've ever heard that defined, but that to me would be, if we, if we as a joint team say, yes, we want a diverse community economically, racially, whatever it is, which I think would be awesome. That's my personal opinion. But then that drives, okay, then we do want affordable housing or additional units. And then we do want to incentivize that because that's our goal to try and do that. So to me, we keep talking affordable housing, and I don't get that conversation because I know people say we want it, but again, we haven't defined how that fits into any of our priorities, other than saying, it seems like we need some more, or I don't know, maybe we do, or, so I go around in circles.
So can we pose that to the group then?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that's, I would agree with you that, I mean, because I think what distinguishes us and is really important to distinguish us from White Fish Bay and Fox's point is, we do have more diversity of all types, you know? And that's why a lot of people want to live here. They don't want to live in a cookie cutter, try to suffer. That's why all my family chose to live here. But the problem is, you know, so if we say, okay, we're going to subsidize development that will allow for more diversity, and if we just narrow it, say, economic diversity. But, you know, so we may subsidize like an apartment development, or like, let's say, we do three-bedroom apartment units so we can get families and blah, blah, blah. But we can't, you know, we don't know that that's going to result in the families that we want to, you know, it could be the millennials who are living here and like the, or walk home from the bars, who decide, hey, I would like to live in that apartment. You're not even controlled who's going to live.
But to me, that's the fourth, that's the fourth quarter decision of that. We still need to come to a rhythm. The first agreement is the community makeup. How and whether we do that down the road is another, to me, another conversation.
It's a little chicken and egg.
What's legal, right?
And what's, and what can we control?
Right.
And what can we control, right?
I think it's important to understand the level of affordability for housing. And that, that's the understanding between all of us. Because this is just knowledge I have, but then you wouldn't understand the conversation as much. But there is workforce housing where they just, the state, I remember they just have to, you can extend the life of a TIP for workforce housing by a year. And that is not affordable in the traditional sense of.